I'd like to leave to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for coming. We have a 7:30 housing project production plan meeting from MAPC. Are we doing PowerPoint and everything else like that?
I'm doing a PowerPoint, yes. I have copies of the PowerPoint over here as well as extra copies of the housing production plan. I'm Jenny, Jennifer Rate, and the Assistant Director of Land Use Planning and the Chief Housing Planner at Metropolitan Area Planning Council. It's been a pleasure working with the town so far on putting together the housing production plan. Want to personally thank Keith Bergman, of course, and Maron from the planning office, as well as the housing committee and those who participated in the survey and the two housing forums that we held. So what I'm going to do tonight is just give you a quick walkthrough of the project, talk about the findings and the input we received, and the recommendations and the next steps. So this will be the first of a couple meetings that we're going to have, I'm going to be back on November 6th, I believe, to get the plan moving forward. So without, just very quickly, the housing production plan, the purpose of the project is really guided under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B. A plan is basically a policy tool for communities to guide the kind of development that they want, and particularly in relation to comprehensive permit projects. It can be a way of better defining what kind of housing needs are in the community, even in the, like, surrounding region, and the housing demand in your own community. And then it also takes a look at what's in the way of new development and how can the community potentially solve those barriers. And then, of course, it drafts up goals and strategies that help to pull things forward, and that's through not just sites that are identified for actual development, but also, you know, regulatory and non-regulatory actions. So Littleton is in a great position right now because they are actually, you guys are over 10%, which is the, under the law, you must meet a minimum of 10% of your year-round housing inventory as set aside for affordable housing. And affordable, in this case, is defined as housing that is serving households who are at or below 80% of the area median income. So when we're talking about affordable housing, that's what we're talking about. You're already over 10%. So the idea here is the housing production plan is really a tool, again, policy tool, for Littleton to control that destiny and to keep, keep on target. This looks like this, actually. The subsidized housing inventory, or SHI, you have 431 units on that inventory for a total of 12.52%. However, there are some units, as there always are on these inventories in communities throughout the state, that are set to expire because the affordability restrictions usually have an expiration date, with the exception of your housing authority units and sometimes others that are reserved in perpetuity. So a little bit about the process. We started the plan back in, I think, April earlier this year. We had a public forum in June for visioning. Then we had a follow-up forum this past, last month for, to look at strategies and actions. Now we've drafted the plan, it's in your hands. It does have to go through an official adoption process as part of the state requirements, versus Planning Board, second's the Board of Selectmen. We then send the plan for their, for approval by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. So during that process, there might be some changes needed, but once it's approved, it's a policy document that can guide housing production. So a little bit about what we heard. Lot of really interesting information and really, I'd say, valuable stories. So the input was, we had a survey, we had these two forums. We also, at one of the forums, asked a lot of questions so that we could sort of make the problem, you know, understandable, what's really happening here in Littleton. And we heard from people who said, you know, "I'm older, but I don't feel like I have a place to stay here in Littleton. I am younger, I'd really like to buy a home, but I don't want to buy a large, single-family home. I'd like a smaller one because I don't want to, you know, have the burden of caring for a larger house." You know, stories about singles who want to move in and/or downsize. There are a lot of different, you know, very rich stories. So you can see here the kinds of things that people are thinking about in relation to where they are at their, at that point in their lives. So, so just quickly, what we found in terms of demographics, the, you've actually increased in the number of households by about 11% from 2000 to 2010, and you're projected to continue that increase up through 2030 by 32%, according to these figures. MAPC actually does the population and household projections for the transportation planning area, which is also MAPC's planning area. So these are the numbers that we use as part of those projections. The greatest increase is actually going to be in senior households. Those are people who are age 65 to 74, add 151% of an increase by 2030. And then 75 and older or better is 149% of an increase. And also, 20 to 34, that age group is expected to increase to about 51%, by 51%, while the other groups actually are decreasing, those age cohorts. So it brings up questions about the type of housing that you currently have available and the type, the type of population that you're going to actually have, and what, is there a mismatch in terms of what you've got and what you might need? So based upon what we understand about the housing stock in Littleton, which is predominantly single-family homes, you might not have the right kind of housing to meet that need. This is a graphic representation of such. 87% of the units are owner, ownership, and 13% are rental units. In general, the market is, is very strong here. The home sales prices are rising. You can see the annual average is now at $466,000, which is great. It's gone up 44% since 1998, but for people who are trying to get into the market, that might be a challenge. The housing stock, also in terms of rents, you are, you're offering rents that are about, on the lower end, within the, you know, comparing you to this region of communities, but again, these are median gross rents. So there are some instances where you're, where there are higher rents and maybe not enough lower rents that would be affordable to a lower or moderate income family. And that gets to how much people are earning and what they can really afford. While the median household income has increased about 66%, the median income is actually pretty low. And about 20% of the households in Littleton are actually considered low income. 520 of them are earning below 80% of the area median income, and 45% are elderly. So definitely a need in terms of cost limitations and potentially cost burdens, because when you have less money, but you have the same number of bills, you end up with a cost burden, a little bit of a mismatch again. Nearly 30% of households in Littleton actually are cost burden, and this explains which ones, with their, their middle-income households, which would be above 80% of the area median income, or ownership versus renters, about 28% of owners, 23% of renters. 48% of cost-burdened households are also elderly. So to pause for a second, these are basically, you know, everything previous that I just explained is outlined in the plan and the housing needs and housing demand assessment, and then it's followed by an analysis of development constraints. And then the last piece is the goals and strategies, which is really the implementation plan to move forward. So we have, I think, five goals, first of which, and these were shared at the last forum, and I would say, in, in the majority of cases, validated by the groups who participated in that meeting. The first goal is the most important to Littleton, I think, based on what we heard, which is to maintain the subsidized housing inventory above 10% through 2020 and beyond. That includes some combination of monitoring what you've got, which you're already in the process of doing, so continuing that, and then also entertaining the idea of friendly 40Bs, where maybe you find a developer who will work with the town to create the kind of housing you're looking for. The second goal is about building community awareness of housing issues and activities. This is, includes everything, you know, from cross-town board coordination and alignment on the need for housing and talking about those needs, and also some education around fair housing, education, and training. Goal three is about addressing the unmet housing needs that I mentioned earlier with that mismatch in terms of what you've got and how the population is projected to grow. So whether it's promoting existing programs that can help seniors or looking at the sites that we've identified and promoting them for new development of that kind of housing. The fourth goal, that probably relates the most to the Planning Board, is about recommending some zoning changes that would advance affordable housing production. And there's a variety of things listed here. Again, this is really a, we didn't draft an accessory dwelling bylaw. This is a recommendation, so it's still, anything in this plan still needs a next step. But at the moment, based upon what we read in your, in your bylaw, there are opportunities that can, could be amended to allow a little bit more affordability. That ranges from a little bit stronger accessory dwelling bylaw, so you would allow the occupation by non-relatives.
No figure.
Yes. Some of these things you've entertained previously, or recently. Amending the cluster zoning bylaw, that would allow a more range of housing types as well as require the inclusion of affordable units. A lot of communities do inquire, require, rather, a density bonus with an affordable unit. Considering overlay zoning districts such as Chapter 40R, smart growth overlay, amend the Village Common District, I know you've entertained that previously as well for mixed use. Consideration of an inclusionary zoning bylaw, that's a bylaw whereby any new development of a certain size would include 10 to 15% affordable housing units. You can pick the range, and you could pick the targets. Or adopting a bylaw that provides some density bonuses for including senior or handicap-accessible Goal five is about building the local capacity, capacity to do these things. So that would start with potentially setting aside some Community Preservation Act funds or town funds, or both, to hire a housing specialist who can carry a lot of these recommendations forward. There's clearly the will, there's a great housing committee, wonderful town administrator with great energy, and a planning staff, but somebody with a housing expertise can really help to guide the conversation in a way that would be slightly different and prove beneficial for the town. And along those lines, an affordable housing trust fund would create a designated place for funds to go in relation to affordable housing. As well as all the different partnerships that Littleton has been participating in, we want to continue those, working collaboratively with the Littleton Housing Authority and others, and then identifying new sources for develop, for affordable housing development. Goal six is about promoting healthy housing, which is everything from siting and location of housing to minimizing indoor pollutants and outdoor pollutants, connecting property owners with the appropriate programs that can help them with energy, energy efficiencies like, you know, oil-to-gas conversion programs, et cetera. So those were all the goals and the strategies in our implementation plan. The next step, of course, is your formal review on November 6th, and then that will be followed by the Board of Selectmen submission to DHCD hopefully in December, and then the approved plan. That is the end. That was my colleague, Karina Milchman, who could not be here tonight, who also has helped tremendously in this process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to mention that one of the themes that was in here, which I think speaks directly to the Littleton experience, is even though we're over 10%, we really want our goal to be, well, one is to maintain our 40B destiny by staying above 10%. And as we saw in some of the, in the report itself, you can see some of the specific numbers here, but you're all aware that we, that in the host community agreement with, with the developer, 15 Gray Road, for example, we sought to have the goal of staying above 10% through the year 2030, basically by trying to agree on a minimum number of units that would be countable and affordable at 15 Gray Road. And that we came up, contractually, we came up with the number 100, and said that the town will be responsible for the units that were affordable at the time, and that Omni would give us another 100, and that based on our judgment, our estimate, that we will have, I think, 3,900 units by 2020, then that would get us right about to 390 units or 10%. If you're off even a little bit, even a little bit, you're below 10%. And you could, and as the, and as the Town of Hudson experienced with the, with the last census, they were above 10%, and, and rightly proud of that accomplishment. And then when the new census figure came out, and the denominator changed, the numerator was the same, the denominator was bigger, and they fell below 10%, and in came an unfriendly 40B, which, which is, which in their case happened to grab a site that they wanted desperately used for economic development, it's now, it's now a 40B proposal. So what we, so what we want to do is to see that if we, if we rest on our laurels and do nothing between now and 2020, we run the risk that we will wake up with a new census figure and be below 20, below 10%. But we can ward that off by just being a little bit proactive, just a little bit, just enough of, as, as the presentation says, use, use a friendly 40B. What does that mean? It means that, it means that an application in front of the ZBA cannot be, for a comprehensive permit, cannot be appealed to the Housing Appeal Court, that, that whatever decision the ZBA says is final. That puts the town in the driver's seat in terms of working with the developer and a landowner to set, to come up with what we see as is best for the community. That creates a climate where we can pick particular, particular sites, look at what the housing needs are. One of the themes that came out of the, the most recent workshop was, a lot of elderly would like to have, who can't stay in their house because, you know, it's too big, they'd love to stay in Littleton, love to have housing opportunities, they'd love to have someplace that's within walking distance of the common, was one of the particular themes that came out. Well, we can begin to address that and, and look at sites and look for ways to do that and, as for one example of how to add on, I would guess maybe 50 units. If, if between now and 2020, we could add 50 units to the subsidized housing inventory, that's probably enough to ward off the denominator growing too big, or some of the other units falling off. As you saw in 2020, there are some units that will expire, or 2024, rather, there'll be some units that are expiring. So it's just being a little proactive and, and meeting the needs that, that the community identifies for itself, that's the key to staying above 10% and being a master of destiny.
We can control our own destiny.
Right. That's what it's all about.
I don't get it. We really don't get what you're talking about. What are you talking about? Are we going to build 50, 40Bs?
No, that we, no, that we would promote private property owners to, to add locations that the town supports of coming forward with proposals that would otherwise be of importance.
So in aggregate, maybe in the next 15 years, we get 50 units that are added to our agenda?
That's one strategy. The other is to amend the zoning bylaw to have incentives where it's the market that's producing those additional units. Any combination of that?
Yeah, other towns like Crowley's been very successful at doing it. This is something that Susan Lewis has, has suggested, you only choose a location, choose what units are like, it fits in the character of the town, and it also works for the people that are there.
How do we choose a location?
Uh, it may be through the master plan. I mean, essentially, it's a housing group that decides what characteristics fit into the whole.
Is it done by zone? Exactly.
So in an area C, you could put four 40Bs, so you don't get...
So I also don't get... No, no, we get to pick the way to do it. You don't have to put 50 in one year, you can put one this year, one next year, 10. If you have a development and you maybe offer like a bonus for senior housing that will count for affordable, you give them that extra one or two units in a smaller development.
Somebody came in with a 40B today.
We could say no, and we probably would say no.
But at the time it's done, if they decided what they want.
You could say yes, you could say yes, if they were giving you what you wanted, and the whole idea of the plan is for us to think about what we want.
No, I know what I'm saying.
And so it's like that laundry list, if you can build this for us, if you can build housing that a senior could move into that's within walking distance of the common and a site that everyone's happy with, why wouldn't we want to promote that if it, if it's a way to get...
Well, we could, we could say yes, anyway.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My question is, the number of 50 is still an arbitrary number.
Sure.
It's also the number of new residents, residential areas coming in, it's going to change our number, so our numerator becomes different, the denominator's different. I think what Mr. Bergman said, it makes a lot of sense to try and get five or 10 over the course of the next 10 years. Is it 10 years you're saying?
Between now and 2020, I mean, if we did, if we, if we could set a goal of finding, you know, say up to 50 units, may not be that many, but if you, if you...
Again, it depends on the residential's, the new resident, residential number coming in is what it depends upon. What our goal is to try and acquire.
Yeah, it's based on the decennial.
It's small, I think.
It could be small, it could, it could be accommodate, it could be that we decide that this particular piece of property that we think ought to be developed as additional housing for the housing authority, that we marshal our resources to bring that about, and then create additional units that are, that elderly in Littleton didn't live in, that that's, that would, that's one strategy.
And then being proactive, I mean, certainly other towns have put together what they want, selected where they want to be, put on RFP, so you're controlling it, and then you're getting the expert builder actually to build it.
That's right.
Using the SBS law.
Right, and, and it's, and the capacity building is key in terms of figuring out, I mean, housing's a complicated, I've been doing housing for 35 years and I still know almost nothing about how, how to put together the deal. All I know is that it's important and that there, you need to have the right people at the table who can crunch the numbers and figure it out, and that there are certain policy parameters that you need. Like, just in Boxborough, Boxborough has a housing trust, we don't. Boy, am I, boy, I feel that that, how did that happen? That, you know, if, if Boxborough and our neighbors have housing trusts as a, as a mechanism to, to, to assemble funds, we ought to set ourselves up like that. If other communities are tapping into their CPA funds so, so that their staff can dedicate some of their time to housing, I'm not talking a full-time job here, but it might be, you know, five, 10 hours a week or something, where if, where right now, housing is one of, as Aaron will say, it's one of those orphaned projects. It's not assigned to anyone. And when we do it, it's because we... And when we do it, it's because we have, because we're in a bond, we have to, and we'll do it. Now we need to be proactive and a lot smarter.
The CPC pays housing because it is one of those orphaned ones. The core purposes of CPC are to fund things typically are not funded. That's why it's historical perspective, because it's hard to get funding, open space, passive open space, housing. In fact, through the housing group on CPC, they're actually going to request more money. They want to be, you know, more active, and it makes sense.
Keith, can you explain to the public what a housing trust is?
Oh, I prefer to. The smartest person of one of our, most of you guys at that point.
Yeah, it's allowable, actually, for years, by special legislation, a lot of communities would form housing trust funds on their own, will, you know, to basically have a place to set aside and designate funds just for affordable housing that were not subject to reappropriation annually and part of the general fund. So they had a separate, by special legislation, a trust fund. Then about six years ago, the state passed a law that allows for the creation of municipal affordable housing trust funds. That trust fund is usually, it can be composed, comprised of, like, majority members of your Board of Selectmen, it can be comprised of representatives from across the community, the design is somewhat up to you. The activities range from real estate development to managing affordable housing programs, like a first-time homebuyer program, a buy-down program, to, you know, affordable housing advocacy and education, to giving out money to developers to create affordable housing units. So a real range of predominantly fiduciary responsibilities. They do have to go through the treasurer's office and have an audit annually. It's, it's really a fiduciary entity that specifically guides the use of affordable housing funds.
Basically, they're tapping into the business of producing housing stock.
And, and they can control housing, exactly. It has a real estate component, so you can purchase homes.
So you get to make money?
And you could make money, technically.
You can actually make money, the town can make money.
You can buy, build homes, buy homes?
You can build, you can buy. Yeah, the trust can be pretty, depending upon your, the charter and the bylaws and the plan, you can make it pretty versatile.
No, I think.
Under the law.
Excuse me, we have actually done something like that with a pair of houses over on Harvard Road that couldn't, couldn't be built under the, you know, under the program that we had, and so they ended up donating some funds to the town.
So we get a bonus tent to allow them to build some more affordable houses according to our star.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's very good.
I saw it from the ZBA thing, what does that mean?
Yeah, that means that, that if you're not going to do a general amendment to the zoning to allow certain uses, increased densities to happen anywhere, then you want to be very specific and use the peculiarity of the comprehensive permit process to allow something that is otherwise not allowed under zoning for affordable housing.
Specifically related.
You know, whatever.
Yes.
The ZBA still has the authority to issue a comprehensive permit, but it's called, but it's friendly because the, because the applicant doesn't have the right to, well, get upset with you if you say no, because they don't, they don't have the right to appeal.
It's more of a partnership between the town and the developer, which is allowable.
If we are over the 10%, the developer has no right to go to the state.
That's right. So that changes the dynamic completely. It's that, that we can still use the tool of a comprehensive permit, a 40B, to get the housing that we want, to achieve, whether it's, you know, 50 units or whatever it is, to achieve that out there on the map, but it, but at places that the community says is where we want it. That's.
So can we do that in lieu of the recommended zoning changes that are in here?
It's all one, it's all part of the same.
Well, I mean, you're, you're under no, we're under no obligation to do anything, to include things in the, in our action plan that we don't think we would.
So, I mean, if we, let's say we adopted this plan, right, we would be bound by the recommendations in this plan.
We don't have to implement it, we can take a look at the ground.
Those are, those are ways to achieve the housing production goals.
So what would we be, what would we actually vote on?
Nothing tonight, you're accepting the?
Not tonight.
No, no, I know. What would we actually be voting on?
You won't be adopting the plan as the way it is right now, unless you have amendments, which could happen.
If you wanted to take something out, if you say, well, we're never going to do that, let's, let's not even talk about it, you could, you could take, take something, take something out of there.
So we have this for a month, so if you have any issues with it, what do we?
But, but by the, but the action.
Well, I understand what I do, I'm asking what the framework to this agreement, I mean, you guys are making an agreement that has all kinds of zoning recommendations in here, are you?
There are options.
They're based upon, yeah, they're, they're based upon.
So we adopted, so we expect to execute?
No, we still have.
You have no, you don't control whether the town meeting adopts the zoning.
No.
No, what we're, that we're essentially coming up with a menu, a menu of.
Some potential ideas to keep this afloat, we don't have to do any of that.
I mean, if we look back at the 2005 plan, it was a menu of things that were in the plan. Hey, one, excuse me, get a, just one talk at a time, he's talking, you're talking, just one.
Go ahead.
Would you like me to answer?
Yeah, in the 2005 plan, for example, that there were a number of things that were in the approved plan that, that didn't get implemented, that did not get the town meeting, that there were not, you know, proposed zoning amendments and other strategies. What we would really like to do, though, is to have as real-life, real-time, a set of strategies of things that we would like to do. For example, if we say that we want to establish the Affordable Housing Trust, we really ought to, you know, have in mind that we're going to go and move ahead with that, or that if we're going to set aside funds for housing specialists, do that, that we're going to try to promote elderly housing through some fashion, you know, through some, that may, some of these things may be, may be hit or miss, it may be iterative processes where we try one thing, it doesn't work, try something else, but I'll keep working towards the goal of, of creating the sort of housing that the community needs.
Yeah, just quickly, two things. So one is the, the zoning recommendations are based upon reviewing your bylaw and thinking about, through the lens of developing affordable housing, what does your bylaw currently do to accommodate that? And so those recommendations that are in there, which are just that, recommendations, are suggestions and ways based on best practices and looking at other similar communities that you could move forward with some zoning amendments that would accommodate the development of affordable housing. And that might mean amending small amendments to your current bylaws. So in some cases, like, it's definitely a whole special district, you know? I mean, we, we kind of gave you a big menu, a big range of selection, you know, in terms of small changes to the zoning to a bigger change. The other thing is, to Keith's point, it is a little bit iterative, it's supposed to be an annual process, so you're going to go back and update it, and maybe you look at it next year, next November, and say, you know, things have changed, let's take a look at this again and revamp our action plan. So, you know, this can be a, this is a process. The first step is to put together the policy framework for moving forward.
And last, Jeremy Mark, I apologize. One last thing you want.
Well, for, I was, you hear of Community Land Trust, which is actually people owning the land where the houses are, is that type of housing trust fund, or? It's a management mechanism. I think that usually being in urban areas, but is that something that might work here too?
Oh, definitely, yeah. Community Land Trust is, is a nonprofit organization that is community-based and allows for people to literally, as members of that land trust, own the land collectively, and then also own a home, like, on that site. So they're technically trustees, and there's, the housing remains in perpetuity, different than a housing trust fund.
Right, because a community agency owns the land.
Right, but they work in suburban locations, they work in cities, they can work anywhere that you have land, and/or property. So, yeah, that's a viable option.
Having a friendly 40B is a way of controlling stuff. 10 years ago, Susan Moses was here and presented that as a way of keeping head, keeping rural character, and we'll say, ah, next time, well, we got stuck with 15 Gray Road, we could have avoided that.
Yeah, no, Sue.
That we could avoid the next one if we actually plan specify what we want.
Sue is on target.
Through that approach.
Yeah, the idea of, like, sort of open space residential design, you have some of that in your bylaw, those are the kinds of things she might have been talking about, green neighborhoods, that kind of thing, yeah, that's, that's a way to achieve the bigger goals and bigger values that Littleton has by preserving space and recreation opportunities, and then setting aside some portion of that space for housing.
I got another question for Jennifer, is it Jennifer?
Jenny.
Oh, Jenny. Jenny, where do the, where do the numbers come from?
The numbers come from my agency. We do all of the projections in-house, they are certified then by the MassDOT, and they are certified as the transportation and population projections for the region.
And how do you collect those numbers?
We collect them through the census, through a variety of different factors, community survey, state population data, projections.
The reason I ask that is so that if anybody has a question, they can understand these numbers are, are fairly technically achieved.
Yes, I can send you the methodology, it may be in appendix of the plan, actually.
Because this is a crystal ball that you're looking through?
Sort of.
In one spot, you talked about middle income, is there a middle income group in Littleton?
There's a middle income group in Littleton, yes.
Are you sure?
I'm positive. There's kind of two tiers of middle income households typically, there's sort of a lower tier and an upper tier. So the lower tier is the one that we're mostly talking about in this plan, those are the people who are earning between 80 and 120% annual median income, so they might have a solid, a gross household income of about $120,000. They're having trouble finding a place to live.
Really?
Yes. According to the figures in the plan.
I have quite a few friends who are masons who are elderly, and they are just very pleased that the 40B went in down on, on Gray Road, because they were jumping right into buying those singles.
We'll look at it for a month, we'll see you in another month.
You'll see me.
Hopefully, I have some recommendations in the process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to open this up for the public?
Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Great, great job, thank you. There were handouts up here that includes the production plan and the PowerPoint.
7:50, continued public care, definitive open space subdivision, shared residential driveway, joint public care, the tree ward, scenic roadway, down a bunch of, down a stick, whatever, we're going to do a whole bunch of stuff.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, very nice.
Here, here, thank you.
Go back to Paul, Mr. Alvin.
Are there any changes in this, or are you just incorporating?
Are we getting to the end, are we done, see?
This is it.
Oh, I can see it.
Before we, before we start, Mark, I have mullinized myself by reviewing the previous meeting, and I miss videos.
Are you good, you up to speed?
On speed.
On the speed, okay, thank you.
Paul, if you have no objection? Excuse me, Paul, if you have no objection?
No, not at all, you're signing the affidavit, that's excellent, thank you very much for doing that for us. For the record, I'm Paul Alvin, I represent the applicant, and you should have a draft decision which incorporates the waiver requests as we have discussed at prior meetings, some granted, some modified, some you're not going to grant. And as you requested at the last hearing, we took your comments regarding the plan, and we incorporated them into conditions of approval. For the sake of efficiency, we incorporated the conditions of approval into one document, notwithstanding the multiple permits, so that all the conditions would apply to all the approvals, so they would all overlap one another, which makes sense, because you can't have the subdivision without the open space approval, and you can't have the open space approval without the site plan approval, and this particular project has a private driveway in it. The only decision which was not incorporated within this is the, the scenic road permit, but I'm sure that could be taken care of with a separate piece of paper, without much applause.
Are we all done? Green is?
Actually, Luke is here, to give you a quick update.
Okay.
Luke Boucher from Green International, the applicant has, up to this point, addressed all of our, our comments in our various letters. The only, oh, well, I guess, I just heard the answer, the only one comment was related to the removal of the trees, but that's, you know, scenic road permit anyway, so if that's not included in here, then everything included in here seems to be addressed in the, in the draft decision.
And I think Aaron will also report that the, the draft decision has been reviewed by town council, and revisions have been made.
I got some questions.
Oh, sorry.
So it's no problem, is, they thought it out back and forth, or?
Yes, yes, we went back and forth a number of times, Chris is very happy with.
Does Paul have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, this is very similar to what we looked at, there are things like, number 26 is blank, and is that, you're just keeping it, keep the numbering in place in general movement?
Right, you'll notice that there's some formatting that I need to do, and some dates I need to put in, and the, like, number 26, that I'll move that number in there, so that was a good question.
What about the open space, have we spelled out, or is it going to be?
That's probably the one decision left to be made, whether you're going to designate that it will be conveyed to the Conservation Commission, or to the town generally, and making that decision is, I think, one of the last decisions that needs to be made.
And we'll make that once the decision gets?
Well, it's in the decision about, so I think you, you sort of want to make that decision now about when we convey it to the town, whether we're going to propose conveyance to the town in the control of the Conservation Commission, or in the control of the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen.
In any event, it's going to be subject to a conservation restriction, and we negotiated those provisions, and town council has reviewed the condition that in the unlikely event, town meeting doesn't accept the land, then we have the fallback where we convey it to the trust.
And if you recall, there are two separate open space parcels, the larger one with most of the walking trails, and the esker, and the smaller one with the open field.
The Conservation Commission had requested it, and I think that's in a ten of the family, this site's been in the works for 20 years, Conservation Trust has gone out there, hired Mass Audubon to do surveys and studies, sort of been start and go, but love has been invested there, and there's been a lot of work back and forth. It has high environmental value, it's an esker, Kelholt, wetlands, this is in the open space recreation plan intended by the Conservation Commission, it's a little strange, all of a sudden change that, ignore all the other documents and the work that's been done towards this.
Thank you for your statement, Don, I, I do not favor the Conservation Commission being in charge of this open space.
Why don't we let DeSantis, since this is their project, weigh in before we make a final decision on it, if they have a wish before we decide it. It's only fair, since it's their land, since they're doing all of this, if they have an entity that they would rather see other than, it's not and will go, how's that, is that fair?
I have no direction to one way or another.
You don't, you not want to ask him?
He'd like to get this over with this evening, correct? I'd like to take a vote on it.
Okay, I'm just offering it to DeSantis.
Yeah, no, I, I, it hasn't, it hasn't been a bone of contention.
I think the board would have a seat voting, the town, the town can decide what to do with it, so.
Make a motion?
So moved.
We need to close the hearing, if you're ready to.
Are we ready, or is this the only issue that's?
I don't know if there's other questions.
Anybody in the audience have any issues before we close the hearing on this? Oh, yeah.
Oh, one question, how are we going to make, how is the, the covenant's going to maintain that the fertilizer and nitrate levels will not be used?
It's going to be, that's one of the things we worked out with town council, we'd have to record a covenant in the chain of title applicable to all lots.
Is there any, is there any, is there any teeth to that, that comment that you're going to have in the, is there any penalty, or any?
Just by a thousand.
If they do use the water soluble nitrates.
We have it in all our bylaws for aqua water resource, for the commercial stuff, but it's, we don't really have any teeth in it, there's not a whole lot, you can't have people policing it, it's, it's going to be, you know, Roland is enforcement officer, what's going to?
We want to make sure that this document has, has some either enforceability or some penalization.
We can't, we can't.
Document, for using, for using insoluble nitrate fertilizer, yes, it's right over the.
Like, like, fertilize my lawn, you're going to find me?
If you're using nitrate.
Right, as, as a special permit, Roland is enforcing enforcement officer, and... Right, as a special permit, Roland is enforcing enforcement officer, and master of the law gives him the authority to levy fines. I don't think anything outside of that process, the planning board can't stipulate fines for that. As far as the overall nitrogen loading, there will be an agreement between the developer or the property owner and the Board of Health on the total number of bedrooms that can be allowed on the site. And that's the nitrogen aggregate.
Yeah.
And so that'll be enforced through each septic system, through each septic permit.
Okay, just, it's just that it's such a very sensitive, dense, dense, you know, it's a very sensitive spot for our aqua.
Well, the, here's, here's the answer to the question. The condition that was added regarding that is it's in condition number two, fertilizers other than water insoluble nitrate fertilizer, also known as slow release fertilizers, are prohibited for any, for use on any lot, lawn, farm, field, or open space associated with this project. A covenant this effect that is effective in perpetuity with respect to land shown on the plans and which has been reviewed and approved by town council. So that, town council is still yet to review and approve what that document will look like. So, you know, whatever teeth, you can communicate with your town council, whatever enforcement mechanisms will be required shall be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permit. So that's one of the first things that we need to do, and it'll be up to, you know, town council to decide whether it's strong enough.
All right, good. Maren, for the record, could you, could you make a point that requesting town council to take a special look at that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else I'd like to close the hearing and go along with this if you can? I can spend most of the closing here. Second, though, I'll be, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the issue is, the only issue we have to modify in this is where the land goes, so the board.
I would motion, I would make a motion that the land be designated to be, the open space be designated to the supervision of the Board of Selectment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Would like that to discussion?
No.
Isn't this the rules?
All those in favor?
I'm going to vote on it. We've talked about it. We, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
I oppose.
I oppose.
Conservation Commission.
What do you want to do with that land? What are you going to do with that land? It's all sensitive land. That should go. Three to two.
It's never going to go to the ball field.
It's not for a ball field. It's just, it's just to make sure that it's going to remain open to the public.
It's always open to the public.
Not necessarily. If it's town on land, the town.
The town can decide what to do with it in future data as opposed to just five people deciding.
Can we move on to the next subject? The board's over.
So, was that condition seventeen?
So you're the swing vote to?
I voted to give it to the town.
Yes, so it would be modification of condition seventeen to eliminate the reference to a, to the Littleton Conservation, Town Littleton Conservation Commission for conservation purposes, and replace it with the Town of Littleton under the care and custody and control of the Board of Selectment.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so any other revisions to this draft or want to vote on the draft in its rough form and have it all sorts of designed in November?
Now, Maren, has, has town council reviewed this draft for its accuracy and so forth?
Yes.
We talked about that fifteen minutes ago. All right. Board wanted the town council to approve the draft as written.
I'll make that motion.
So moved.
As amended.
As amended. So moved second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I want to check.
Okay. Forty-one. Thank you for working with us and.
In the long run.
No, thank you. Here is one more vote, the scenic road permit vote.
Do we have it in front of us?
I did not draft a decision on that, but they're usually very straightforward.
Could it be consistent with this plan?
Yep.
All those in favor?
We've discussed this.
I would, I would move that we authorize Matt to draft a standard scenic road permit to go along with this.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
No, seriously.
I not go.
Listen to what we have to say. It's great job. Really good.
Look forward to doing it again soon. Thank you.
No, thanks. Thanks is enough.
Right.
Thank you, Maren.
Okay, the Concord Properties Route, Russell Street, Route nineteen, they've asked to continue to the next meeting, so if we.
Okay.
Don, motion?
To the sixth? Okay. Good time. All those in favor signify?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll have to schedule the times after we know everything that's continued.
We have an eight oh five running in Littleton.
Farmers Row Estates.
Are they actually here?
Absolutely.
Is this different than we have?
How can you put all these dates of hearings when you didn't show up? Just because you were on it, we have to count them? Nice.
So that way I can track and make sure we didn't drop it off anyway. That's why I do it that way.
Put a little zero through the middle of it, like a no show. You have a little presentation for us?
Very, very little. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Douglas Duchesne, representing the applicant, with me here tonight. I'm Matt Waterman from Land Tech Consulting. And I do apologize for the time it has taken for us to work our way through the engineering and changes that have gone on, and I do apologize for having to continue, but I always feel it's better to continue and come in when we have something to discuss or have answered all the questions rather than come in and take up your time saying, we're still working on it. So I do appreciate your patience. At this point, it is my understanding that the board has received a final comment review letter from your peer review engineer. There are a few outstanding items, which I understand, well, I know have been drafted in as conditions in a draft decision. I talked with Mr. Waterman, and I'll let him speak for himself, but the items to be concluded are all well within their ability and feel that there will be no issues in resolving those final plan tweaks and turns before seeking endorsement of the plans. There was one other issue raised in the, in the draft decision that I'd like to just bring up so that we can figure out how it applies and what we should do, and that is a requirement in your, in your subdivision rules and regulations that require that we either provide you a written statement from our engineer, that we in no way trigger any MIPA triggers requiring a MIPA review of the project, or we actually provide you a certificate from the Secretary of State saying that we've actually completed the MIPA process. I have never filed through MIPA for a project that wasn't first approved because you, what are you applying? You're applying with a major project, and if something changes, then you have to go back and redo the MIPA. And as you might know, the MIPA process can and generally is a very time-consuming and expensive process. So we look to the other part of the regulation that says, do you trip MIPA, and can you certify that you don't? And Matt and I have reviewed the MIPA requirements, and there's a requirement in there that says if natural heritage, if you are working within habitat area, and natural heritage determines that your project constitutes a taking, therefore you do need to file an ENF, which is the first level, lowest level of MIPA review. As we've discussed before, we have not filed with, under MISA, with natural heritage, and again, do not generally do so until we have a project to present to them to ask whether this project constitutes a taking or not. So we're kind of in a catch twenty-two. I guess I can sit here and say, we don't trigger MIPA because we have not been informed by natural heritage that our project would constitute a take. But I also have to be honest with you. If and when we ever file with MISA, there is a possibility that they could say, it is a take, in which case, now you trigger MIPA, and we're going to have to do MIPA. But until we file with them, I have no way of knowing whether this would constitute a take. And I will tell you that our experience with natural heritage, we have for quite a while now been working with natural heritage to review the property both in Littleton and in Westford to get an understanding of where their areas of concern are, and therefore have an understanding of what we would need to file with them if and when we file with them. And it's typical that, you know, what MIPA says is, well, show us your project, file with us, we'll work with you, and if you can, if you're going to disturb areas within the habitat area, they want to see a one and a half, a one to one and a half mitigation, so they'll let you disturb so many acres in return for granting a CR on one point five acres for every acre. And in doing that, and in working through that kind of arrangement with MIPA historically, they have sometime concluded your project, even though within a habitat area, because you're going to conserve, you know, one and a half acres for every acre disturbed, that you're not a take. So I would expect and hope, if and when we ever file with MISA and natural heritage, we would sit down with them and work, that would allow for us to conserve, you know, the right amount of land so that we wouldn't be a take, and therefore we would not trigger MIPA. So I guess what I'm reporting is, unless and until natural heritage says we have a take, we don't trigger any other conditions under MIPA.
Even the road curbs on the state route, if you have two.
The single per, the single permit like that? No. Nope, I don't think, that's not enough.
I'm sure surprised, because usually you get tallying up points for having a new road, and you have other roads going to be sort of enlarged, is it not?
Well, Matt, did we bring the, do you have an?
I did, but I didn't think.
Have you asked MIPA?
Have we asked them? No, we just, we just reviewed their threshold review criteria. I mean, we've done.
You lying to us right now?
No, sir.
Good. All right, keep going. Well, the issue is whether or not we want to proceed forward with this, knowing that MIPA hasn't really looked at it, and as long as you have a stipulation in there that once this is approved, and if you do move forward, that MIPA is going to take a look at it. The board has to decide. It's a nine, it's a nine-odd subdivision. It's got a lot of open space involved with it. Is it warrant dragging MIPA in, or does it make more sense if they do decide to do it to have MIPA come in at that time?
Well, Mr. Maren, I'll go a step further, and we would certainly certify, make it a condition, that if we move forward with this project, we do know we have to file with natural heritage. If we come out of the natural heritage process and they say it's a take, we will be required to file with MIPA, and we will do so. If, however, we come out of natural heritage and it's not a take, then we don't trip the threshold, we wouldn't go to MIPA. So we're happy with any condition that holds our feet to the fire on that.
I think the fact that you kept it at nine houses, you've got so much land left in its natural state and everything else like that, if you could work with us on that, I don't think it's a stretch to finish what we've started here, but if they do decide to go to MIPA, let MIPA have a look at it.
I agree totally.
I think we need someone to start noting here, and this is my feeling beforehand, mentioning that MIPA needs to be consulted before going ahead to building. Off the record, as I understand it, this, you're getting the permit, but you're probably never going to build this. And I can understand trying to avoid the expense of MIPA and environmental impact reports on which, yeah.
Very expensive, very time consuming.
But it'd be nice to have some notation, saying that we're all.
Condition, as you please, because. And truthfully, we couldn't move forward. You know, we would be in violation of MISA if we don't go to natural heritage, and then we would be in violation of MIPA if we said, oh, we're not going to file, we're just going to go ahead, so.
Mark, I don't even know why we're talking about this, because this is, that's, we approve the subdivision. He's required by law to go to.
Well, you have an interesting provision in your subdivision rules.
Very. That's another legality.
We all already have a nice, neat package. Usually when we do, like we did down at Hot Lab, and MIPA was involved, we had a termination thing before we had filed this. On this one, we all know that it's a large open space, there's nine houses, there's a potential that it may never be built. Kind of makes more sense, rather than put the cart in front of the horse, let MIPA decide if in fact you can go there.
We would appreciate that.
This board.
So how does, how does number seven have to be amended, Maren, in order for that to happen?
Why don't we let town council decide how to put that in as long as the conditions are?
Number seven is one of the findings. We'll add a condition that uses the wording that.
Have town council provide some wording that doesn't, doesn't require the traitor to happen prior to his application for a permit, building permit.
Any other issues the board has with?
Two groundbreaking.
Fire the building permit, anything, yeah.
Yeah, building permit.
Anything.
Do you want to weigh in about where you're at with this? Then there's a couple of outstanding issues.
Actually, I was involved with this one.
Are that green, is that green?
We're both greens.
Same.
Same green.
Stop wearing green shirt.
So we, we reviewed the revised materials that they gave us. There were seventy-some odd comments that we had in the previous letter. We basically felt all fourteen of those were addressed, and actually, two of them they addressed since we submitted the letter, so now it's down to twelve. Most of them, we just said that they, recommended they just be made conditional. There were three of them that we suggested be resubmitted for review, some materials be resubmitted for review. One was a hydraulic grade line analysis and a, also an land analysis involving a stormwater drainage system. A third involved the, also stormwater related, involved infiltration, facing number two, that some of the design be modified to promote infiltration a little bit better. And there was one other decision that both us and the applicant deferred to the board on, which was relatively minor issue of placing granite curbing on the inside of the cul-de-sacs. They proposed no curbing there. The subdivision regulations say that there should be curbing there, but we take no exception with their designs. They have rain gardens in the middle of those, so.
We want to keep it rural.
Yeah, let's put curb, the water can't get into that rain garden in the middle, so that was the only.
We have no issues addressing the three or four house state incomes.
And we're required to do so prior to coming back for endorsement, so it has to be done.
We need more rain gardens.
I agree.
I'll entertain the most of the closing hearing.
So moved.
So moved. Second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain the most of approval.
As amended.
As amended, but the word is from town council to stipulate that if in fact.
Prior to building permit.
It gets a, it gets sent to MIPA and let MIPA make their determinations.
Yes, prior to the issue of the building permit.
No, actually, you want it prior to doing any work on the roadway or in drainage?
Sure.
Building. That was my suggestion?
Not even building.
Right, because they don't get the building permits till after. Sorry.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you. And again, I apologize. We kind of dragged it out here, but yeah, appreciate the board's patience.
Thank you.
Fine job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What do you think? The mix in between? Okay, we're probably right back on schedule, right?
Yeah.
Just to be, oh, eight fifteen.
I'm doing it all right. Where's the map? There is no map. You got to rock it.
What's up with this? What do you, wait, so what do you need tonight?
I'm re-gifting.
All right, we have an eight fifteen with Pope Parif, warehouse, warehouse fulfillment center. All right, we have an eight fifteen with popery, warehouse fulfillment center. People, you build, the people will come.
We're gonna have to build some ice cream.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you for having us. We wanna propose popery, and popery is a catalog fulfillment company that does jewelry, books, clothing. My name's Don O'Neill, and I'm with a company called Condyne. This is Mark Gibb. Mark Gibb's our civil engineer, and we own the distribution one-dash-three facilities up there in Littleton. Our first building up there is a half a million square feet, and it's a multi-tenanted building that we put the 250,000 square foot addition on. We've owned the property since 2007, and the property is also permitted for an additional building, which is the popery site that you'll see a little bit in the yellow that we'd like to present and discuss. In 2007, when we acquired this facility, we had to do a lot to get tenants into the building. The building right now is almost 100% occupancy. We've also cleaned up the backside from the previous tenant, six to eight acres down on the ground, we've cleaned up all the concrete that was left behind, and have a solar farm on the six acres, and we also have solar on the entire roof of the existing building for, I think it's a total of six megs on the total property. We have a tenant that would like to come to this location in Littleton. They are currently in North Billerica. They have a distribution facility in Wittensville. They also have one in New Hampshire, in Maine, excuse me. And what they are doing, they would like to consolidate and build, and bring everything under one roof. Currently, they have about 400 employees. 230 of the employees will be retained, it is estimated to come to work at this facility. We have 130 new jobs being created within this. The facility will be a fulfillment center with their data center and call center. There's a little difference between what a fulfillment facility is and a distribution warehouse. Fulfillment facility is more based around call center, e-commerce, where they put, pick product, put it on conveyors, package product goes on FedEx, UPS. Distribution set, center, more tractor-trailers, in, out, a great volume. This fulfillment center will have, on a peak day, anywhere between five and eight, when it's non-season, trucks on the inbound, and on the outbound, three to four, five of drop trailers from either FedEx, UPS, where small packages go out that are all labeled, and then they go out to their distribution throughout the network. The good thing about this is, they are a Massachusetts company. They have looked all across the United States, they've looked in the surrounding areas of New Hampshire and Rhode Island. Their belief is, in 1963, they started the company, they wanna base their operations and maintain in Massachusetts if everything works out for them. So, from the standpoint, this is a tenant that wants to have a 12-year lease, it's not something that's a three-year lease, let's build it and see what happens afterwards. This is something that we're not building on spec. This is a tenant that the town, or many towns, would love to have with the amount of employees, whether it's using the amenities locally, between the gas stations, the food operations, and what's offered in the town of Littleton. The benefit to them is the location, putting everything under one roof, the access to the highway, and they're not too far from the North Billerica. So, their headquarters will remain in North Billerica, which is about 80,000 square feet of office. Their 200 and 100, 300,000 square feet will be consolidated into this facility. Every two years, they acquire another company, this just adds to their volume. If we go to the next slide, Mark, I'll just show you a little bit more. Basically, this is what the layout is, and I'm gonna touch base on some of the simple aspects of the building itself, and I'll have Mark say a few words regarding the permitting, the engineering, and where we stand today. Everything on the right side, inside the building, is narrow aisle racks that go six high, wire-guided machines that go up and down, they do not go off track, and a pretty hefty investment, but a safe investment for the operators of the facility. Everything on the left is where the conveyors are, so inventory from the right goes to the left, it's picked, consolidated, goes on conveyor belts, and goes out of the front of the building on the left-hand side. The right-hand side is the receiving docks, which are nine receiving docks on one side, and an additional eight to nine on the shipping side on the opposite side. They do have some seasonal times, as we all know, just like Thanksgiving, Christmas, they go through surges. They do hire full-time employees beyond what they, they hire during those times, where there's additional jobs, whether it's people looking for additional work, whether it's people at home, where the kids are off to school, and they're looking to pick up four or five hours, X amount of hours a day. So, it's a, it's a great tenant, and again, it's, it's e-commerce. E-commerce is here to stay. As we all know, what's going on with the, the big malls, they're suffering a little bit, even, even to the extent where I thought I'd never order something online, and I see myself doing it now, and I don't think it's going away. The building is 450,000 square feet, it has 400 parking places, it has 15 trailers for storage, and has 18 doors in and out of the facility. It has an access road around the facility, the detention basin in the back, with some detention on the front that's already been designed. Most of this site has, has already been approved in design when we originally bought it, and I'll have Mark step up and touch base on that.
Yeah, I think what I'll go through is the permits that we're gonna be looking for and proceeding on with. The site currently has a master plan, special permit, and water resource district permit. We will be seeking modification through the planning board of those. Basically, the modification is due to an increased impervious area going from approximately 26% up to approximately 32% lock coverage on this site due to the building size increase, and so we'll be seeking to modify those two permits. We will go through a site plan review, I believe, I anticipate going through the pair review as well for the design of the site, the stormwater, and technical aspects of the design. We'll also be going through conservation commission, through most likely a notice of intent, and we, the previous proposal did get a, have a MIPA certificate issued through an environmental impact report. We have submitted a notice of project change for the increase of building size from the 360, that was about 360,000 square feet, up to the 450,000 square feet. That's currently, was put into the monitor yesterday, so it's in a, a review period and comment period, so we're already in the process of that. So, basically, and as Don said, the stormwater will be designed to meet today's requirements, and that's the permitting path we're trying to take.
Can you bring it back to the other slide, Mark? This just gives you a little bit of overview of the park. Currently, we still maintain the road, still own the road, has not been turned over to the town yet. You see what Phoebe's doing, which is a blessing, and our hats off to them to take something that was a challenge to make it look what it is today. If we, if they can continue around to the sides, they've done a great job and given their help to make that what it is today. Their foresight was tremendous of utilizing a building that a lot of us would have shied away from, but they make it work for their process, and they've done a good job. So, they've cleaned up the front end, we've been cleaning up the back end. This is the last lot, like, we would like to clean up, get rid of the debris that's left behind, get rid of all the concrete, grind it up, and clean this whole site up. The position of the building is, the building will be 40 feet in height. It is, it's almost like a wall between the neighbors in height, it does not have the activity as a regular warehouse would. All the docks are in the front, all the activities in the front, and the drainage in the back. And it's a tenant that's few and far between in this industry, and the commitment that goes into the building that they will spend is, is well over $14 million on conveyors and equipment. They are here to stay if, if we can make things keep progressing, their commitment to the community, they're a very, a good community player, they do a lot of participation in fundraisers, police departments, fire departments, and we're on a fast track. What they need to be in, the first quarter of 2016, if we had our, all our ducks in a row, we would be on site. In January, start cleaning and clearing up the site, grinding the planks, doing a lot of site work, and then try to get foundations in in a March timeframe, April timeframe, while the steel is, is on its way. If they miss that quarter, they cannot afford to move for another year. So, the pressures against us and timelines are credible, but we know we can deliver with your help and approvals along the way.
What is that space, what's, what's in between the two buildings? There's a lot of stuff.
This is, the way the building's built, it will be two independent buildings because of its size. So, that's a common hallway. Can you bring up the other slide, Mark?
You mean on the site?
On the site, yeah. You can see it there, you can't see it on any of the other, any of the other views.
This is what you're talking about right here? Where it's hovering over?
Exactly, yeah.
That is Phoebe's land. All right, do you show our property line, Mark?
Yeah, the Condyne land is right here that we, this piece, so that's part of that big building up on the.
All right, so that's.
I walk through there every other day. What is the roll trailer?
Okay.
The truck trailers, they refurbish them and send them off.
Okay, okay. But it's not part of this project?
No, no, as a development, that's probably the potential for another smaller building.
Yeah.
It's not our land and it's Phoebe's. One other question.
Yeah. The, you mentioned you, there's a possibility you have a part-time employment for kids.
I didn't say the kids.
Or, I mean, for.
Town people.
Town people, whoever.
Yes.
Local people. What seasons would those be?
They're mainly around the Christmas holiday season, similar to, you know, the food industry. They have a surge, you know, two or three months prior to Christmas, that's a big surge for, and I'm not too sure of other holidays, but I think there's a window of like four months.
And what, what do they produce? What does it produce?
Nothing is produced here, okay? It's a catalog fulfillment, so what is being produced that they distribute is produced elsewhere. So, this is, let's say there's a case of jewelry, there's a case of frames, there's a case of books that are in the catalogs, people call up an order, they pick the orders, and they ship them direct to the house.
So, this is a warehouse?
Not a warehouse. It's very, it's a very touchy subject. Warehouse is full distribution, going to another distribution facility, going to the end user, if you can follow that.
So, this goes, this goes straight to the end user. What is, what is there in it for the town? What benefits does this, does it bring to the town?
I think this brings, this would probably be the second largest employer in the town on the top of the road.
Town employees?
Yes. At what, wherever the employees are from. The benefit is, is cleaning up the site and helping us put a good, solid tenant in here that's not a spec building or the town. I think it, as a fulfillment center, there's very few of these around in this area. The restaurants, the downtown, the gas stations, the hotels, that's a lot of people, and those amenities around here, as well as the equipment, I think they have X amount of trucks that would be excise tax and go, go to the town. And I think it's, it's a, it's a good neighbor.
So, the trucks would be registered in the town?
What, little trucks they have would be registered.
Okay, that was a question. Sorry, Peter.
There's approximately $47 million worth of, creating the building and the interior that we're talking about. It's low-impact, not, what'd you say, 250 people in it currently?
250 people, 230 would be coming day one, and additional 130 would have to be hired, starting on day one and migrating up to the first two, three, five years.
And it's all automated, mostly automated, it's, it's basically like what Amazon and Google Ad do right now.
It's a competitor to Amazon, and a step down, you know, Amazon's an animal, but everything on the right, all those racks, inventory has to come out of those racks by a machine operated by a man. Everything on the left is handpicked, onto conveyors, they go out to the doors to be packaged, labeled, and go.
And everything's shipped to, by UPS, to the post office, then to people's houses?
That's correct.
So, it's smaller vehicles coming out, it's not tractor-trailers, it's smaller?
Right, let me take, let me, smaller vehicles as well as a tractor-trailer, just load it all up, so you're not shipping 20 trucks and maybe one truck full.
So, you're anticipating like five trucks a day as opposed to a distribution center where you'd have 20, 30, 40 tractor-trails coming?
That is correct. And at the peak season, there is no more than, than 10, 10, 15, when this thing is fully operational on the inbound, which is, which is nothing.
What about the lighting? You have newer state road up above it, I know what was concerning, the first building above the lighting is, since the building's gonna be facing forward, most of it's gonna be there, so it's probably not gonna be as.
No, it'll be, for the most part, what we'll have on the back is wall backs for security, and it'll be most likely zero lot line with lenses on them. On the front, you're looking at 40 feet, and you're probably looking at the pole height 30 feet below the building. But all the lights on, on the front. If we can go to the other slide, Mark? So, the only effect that, that could, the people on the left are way up on a hill, and there's a big buffer in between that, and then the development on the right is mainly looking at the side of the building.
It's also gonna be a call center, correct?
Yes, a data center, call center, where they come in and they're on the phones all day. Most of it is, is no more than a two-shift, split shift type operation, and that's, that's probably the reason more for the car parking, the way it is. And that's, that's probably the reason more for the car parking as ways is.
I was gonna ask about the contract. You've got about four hundred spaces here.
Right.
You only have two hundred for the employees?
We have two, we have a hundred and thirty, two thirty coming.
Yeah.
And hire an additional hundred and thirty, or two thirty. They're gonna work their way up over a period of time. So the parking is reserved for that four hundred.
The, I'm an advocate for more green, more gray. And what I see here is acres of parking. I would, I would strongly suggest we see more islands and more green in the parking area.
They're gonna eventually wanna fill this. This is, this is like a third of what they need right now. Ron Lake's goal is to be.
Yeah, what they're gonna do is they're gonna, they're overbuilding this day one. So they, the part on the left is pick slots that will be a mezzanine, second level, third level, year three or five down the road. So they're gonna start on the floor, they're gonna have the racks set up, and then they're gonna drop the planks in, the egress stairs and the sprinklers and the lights, everything that needs code, and they grow up in that whole area.
Right, yeah.
So that's where this, this expansion grows. But day one, their investment is right out front. So they're, they're, they're here to stay type mentality.
I'm okay with that, just I'd like to see more islands and more green in that area.
Peter, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Does anybody in the audience have a question? Name please, so Mark can get it.
Sure. Michael Zeldin, Lowen Street. Do you represent the Puppore Company or do you represent the owner of the, of the space?
I am the owner. We are the owner of the space.
So for full disclosure, one of the things that you're also interested for planning purposes, you're interested in a tax exemption in order for this project to go forward, both for the real estate and for the personal property of the building. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that is being proposed currently.
Yes. So when you were asked the question, what's in it for the town, the other piece in it is obviously what's in it for the investor, the owner of the land, and all the rest. For full disclosure purposes.
The, the tax incentive goes with the tenant, does not go with the owner.
Okay.
It's the owner request, I mean, the tenant requesting the break.
Yeah.
Because of the investment that goes into this day one is significant with number one, the building, but number two, the equipment inside the building. So what they're looking for is a break on their taxes to ramp up to be a long-term tenant in the town of Littleton.
The, the, for disclosure is, is Puppore itself a privately owned company? Or is it a subsidiary or owned by someone else?
It's a good question. I think they are owned by a company that owns multiple companies, but don't own.
The company is called American Capital.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
And you know what percent of Puppore is owned by American Capital?
No, I don't.
Eighty-three percent.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, please? Anyone have any questions?
Mark, do you, do you know something about this tax break?
Yeah, they've been meeting with the selectmen to discuss the tip because it had to be on the Warren article for the November of Warren. So it is on there. The residents of the town will be able to talk about it and there're gonna be some meetings with the selectmen on it for the tip. This is a.
Can you tell us more about it?
All I can tell you.
Yeah, it's, it's on the town meeting, it's on the Warren.
Because the residents, it's a two-thirds vote at town meeting to offer a tip.
What is the, what is the tax break that they're looking for?
That's not decided yet, that's to be negotiated.
They're still talking about it.
What have they, what have they proposed?
We don't exactly know, they've been talking.
And that's outside of your permitting that in.
The selectmen are discussing with them for some sort of tax break.
Right, and then.
Some of the what IBM.
So that we gave IBM?
Some of, I don't know if it's the same as what IBM, but IBM came here because of the tip and they're coming, they're interested in the tips to come here.
What troubles me about it is we're looking for, for a commercial component to help, help the town with this tax base. When we give away, you know, the, the tax on, on a thing, on a situation.
What ends up being is what you give up upfront, you recover in the long term, over twenty years. It comes back to, from the last meeting I recall, it comes back over time, but it's still, you know, let's say fifty percent of a hundred bucks is better than zero or a hundred dollars.
But it used to be the state would come in and.
Yeah, they don't, they're gonna pick up something for the added employees that are gonna come here, they're gonna pick up something.
Will the town receive less taxes by this?
No.
No, the town's gonna get more money. They have, in round numbers, just to be fair, and I'll, it's about as much as I remember from your presentation earlier. Right now, this land is, the town's getting a hundred and five thousand dollars for this as raw land.
For that piece of land?
For that piece of land. It's praised at round number three and a half million, four million.
Three and a half million.
See, I did, I was paying attention. Okay, so now if you add the, the building and the eleven million dollars they're gonna spend inside of it, depending upon how much the town and they agree to on the tip, it could be anywhere, and depending on what scenario they go to, it could be two or three hundred thousand dollars more they're gonna get. It could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on how it finally decided what their ultimate break is gonna be.
What would be, if there were no tax break, what would be?
They would probably be assessed at.
Well, whatever the new building costs, that's where, what it is under.
Right, they would probably be at about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars total. So that's gonna be something less than that.
The difference, one of the differences is, this is ground up. This is vacant land, we've had it since two thousand and seven. We've had opportunities to build further customers, we've had opportunities to build a spec warehouse and build it hopefully they come. This is a tenant that wants to come and stay. And it's, it's not a three-year, it's not a five-year, it's not a seven-year lease. This is a twelve-year lease with five, five-year, two terms of five-year renewals. The investment, once that investment goes into that building, that is extremely hard to move anywhere else.
It's also, there's a big difference. This is not a warehouse that's gonna have tires on it.
No.
It's not gonna be a six million dollar building. It's gonna be a fifty million dollar building by the time they're done. So it's a lot.
One of our buildings down in Totten, it's two hundred thousand square feet, some tire, it's full of tires. Kinda boring, and not many employees.
So it, there's eleven million dollars going inside the building between all the rounds that they're putting in and everything. There's eleven million inside.
And it's gonna be a main data center because they, and it will have a backup generator. It cannot afford to shut down.
So this is just an informal right now. You're, you're coming, they're not gonna do anything. You come to the meeting and you get to vote whether or not you're gonna authorize a tip. Any two-thirds vote at town meeting, and then they're gonna try to fast, or we've agreed to put it on a fast track, try to have all the boards together to try to get this resolved by spring so that they can know where to go with this and be.
Right, one of the, I wouldn't say plus it, but one of the blessings, this is previously disturbed land. This is a mess.
It's a cleanup.
And it's a cleanup, absolutely. Besides the tenant, there's a good cleanup going on. We have it on the front, we've done it in the back, our neighbor up front, Phoebe is doing it. And this whole revitalization is going to come around.
This tenant puts out four hundred million brochures every year. So that's money that goes to the post office as well. And in order for them, one other thing, in order for them to come here, they're taking a facility in Maine, they're taking a facility that they just purchased in Denver and consolidating everything here. And keep their operation, their head office in Billwicker coming, everything's gonna be here. And they have a deal with the post office because they believe four hundred million that it's gonna go from FedEx to the post office to people's houses.
That is accurate. Now, the deal with the post office is that that money's not going into their pockets, that negotiated deal. That's so that you get more catalogs out to a broader range that they don't support now in catalogs, to increase their customer base and acquire other companies.
So this is just basically a preliminary site plan to get, get people.
It's a little educational.
And then there'll be some meetings with the selectmen and posted for the tip prospect, but in town meeting will be, it'll be on coming Warren for November.
Nine, the seventh, the sixth?
November twelfth.
November twelfth, I was close. Nothing, they just wanted, this is just informational, that's all it was.
It was promising.
If they get a, if they get affirmative vote from the selectmen and the residents of the town, they're gonna come forward with us to fast track this.
Shouldn't we wanna vote to give them a thumbs up or a thumb down?
They're not even answering, this is just, this is just information.
Thank you, informative and progressive.
All right. Anybody have any other questions?
Yes, will you be hiring local labor to build the building?
No, we're gonna just, all foreigners. We'll, whatever we can that, that. One of the things that you can see is aggregate next door. We're not trucking thirty miles down the road when one of our big suppliers is next door, whether it's fill, on the creek, asphalt. It's kinda a lead checkbox type scenario with locals around.
They don't anticipate everyone from Whitingville to come up here to fill these jobs. They're anticipating people from here to fill a good portion of the jobs.
You knew, you knew this?
Yeah, yeah, I had it mean.
That's what they presented to us, yes.
Why didn't you say that?
You didn't even let me, you asked, you know, I would've if you'd given me a chance.
You're closing the hearing right now.
What? This is just, this is just a informal discussion.
I mean, this, this meeting.
We just have an informal discussion.
I think it's great.
What else did you, what else did you talk about at the meeting?
That was it, did I, did I miss anything? That was the brief.
There was a brief, I mean, that I touched on who they are, what they are.
No secrets, we did no secrets, open board.
Yeah, no.
How, how come we have to pry stuff like this out here?
Pry what? That has nothing to do with us, that's the selectmen. I don't even, I couldn't even read that. It was, I only went to Littleton High School, I couldn't figure that out. Thank you.
Hey, hey, Littleton High School's a damn good education.
Do we have any more questions?
No, I haven't, nobody said it, so.
Mark, let's, before we conclude, let's see if there are any more questions.
I asked everybody, nobody raised their hands, we're done.
But I do have a question, Mark, I'm sorry.
All right?
All right, go ahead.
All right, there wasn't full disclosure, okay? And one of the, this town's a wonderful project, but the company has consistently given pieces, not the whole story of who they are. First of all, they're registered as a foreign company in Massachusetts.
You know what, we're dealing with site planning, that's.
I understand that, I'm talking about the qual, Mark, I'm talking about the quality of the level of presentation given to any town board. It has to be above the board, and we're not getting that.
You should be asking those questions when the tip part of it comes. We're just talking about a nice warehouse that's gonna be fully automated, that's gonna be fifty million dollars, bringing tax.
If they're not telling us ahead of time who they are and what they are, how do we know that their plans are real?
What do you mean?
I'm sorry. When you do business, when you do business, you either play it straight on a gradual basis or you withhold information. They're withholding information.
What information?
Crucial, crucial. They're not masters of their own destiny, they're owned by someone else.
They're rich to U.S. company, it's all with documents.
This company is privately owned, Puppore is privately owned.
So what?
You don't know where they're from. They happen to be registered in Massachusetts as a foreign company. That means they come from, their ownership is outside the state. It's a technicality. It's a technicality, but it affects their tax structure, it affects their, how they make their purchases, and what their tax claims are. It affects their planning.
Okay, that, I would say.
I'm gonna tell you, every other, every other, every other planning board, every other town where they hear a presentation from an incoming company, whether it's Baxter or a startup, they get straight information right from the beginning.
Like what?
What I just gave you.
No, we're here for site planning, that's stuff the selectmen need to deal with, not the planning. We have enough problems dealing with that.
That's right.
And thank you very much. We're moving on, we have a.
Thank you.
Eight, eight fifteen, no, eight thirty, Paper Street Evaluation, Lowen, Lowen Drive. How much would it cost the council of the company to be going to support the construction? But that's a decision for the selectmen.
He was saying, you should actually, the way the tax structure has changed since that's been there. They can, they leave you a concern with the tax.
No, they have to, they're not on profit.
If they're a foreign, if they're a foreign company.
It's nothing to do with.
It has nothing to do with Lowen Drive, let's talk about Lowen Drive. I live for this. Lowen Drive, does anybody know where Lowen Drive is?
Yes.
Yes, it's Lowen's.
You just piled this old smadback property, right? No, no, that's, no, no, it's all smadback.
Classic, classic.
So you have a lot, a lower lot that's on the end of one of the roads that has never been finished, never been built. And you're proposing to build, how much of the road to get one to fifty feet of the road?
This is fifty?
Mm-hmm.
And this is staying, this is existing pavement to be removed, so that's all coming up.
Is there a road out there now?
No, it's just, we had it as a driveway parking area.
I think one of the, one of the issues that we might have with this is snow plowing for Jimmy, where he's gonna push the snow, fire apparatus, we're close to consider calling it, I guess that's probably not answered that. Is the board okay with fifty feet being built?
That was mostly for the driveway.
Right, that was, when you came in for the informal discussion not too long ago, you asked him to do fifty feet.
Fifty feet, huh? That's what we did on Washington, the first one.
And you know, this doesn't affect you, did I correct that, there's a septic system here, paper road, so. Not an issue, but.
On the other side of the road, yes.
Yeah.
One thing we're gonna want is some sort of ladder that you're gonna maintain the road until the town takes it over. You'll have to file it, even though it's part of your driveway, you'll have to file it to keep it accessible and that kind of stuff. A company with some sort of, I don't know, in such a, if you're voting to stop the division theater, see the town takes it over and you don't have to let it chill, it's, it'll be more like a private driveway than anything else. Do you have any questions?
So do you have that, do you have that lot right now that's like an open lock, open cave lot? Next door, like when, at the, at the west side of Lowen Street, there's a, there's a lot.
Where the pavement is?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's yours, and that's where you want, you want this road to go past that so that you can build a house in that area?
That paved area is shown on the plans.
Right.
The paved area exists and that's coming up.
Okay.
That's just a parking lot in basketball.
I see that, okay. We're a little confused here. I'm trying to look at which way Lowen Street, 'cause I come up.
The house is gonna be, as you're going down the road, it's gonna be like.
As I'm going down the road or up the road?
Down.
Or if I wanna go the other way? This, this is.
If you go to the other side.
All right, so right now, Baldwin Hill, all right, now I know where it is. Baldwin Hill comes up this way, and Lowen goes down around, does it come over to?
That is. Here's warning about coming.
The one that goes by.
It's not constructed.
What's Paula Beth, and what's the other road that it goes on?
What's the little peach on?
Jennifer.
Does that, Lowen come out on Jennifer?
Yeah, it's your first right when you go up Jennifer.
All right, and you're coming down this way here, and that's.
Right now, you can only turn left when you get to the end of the road.
It's not, it's not.
You wanna do this to this?
It's approved subdivision, it was done back in the fifties, right?
And the septic system of somebody else's on your property?
No, we're on the other side of the.
Which is in another right, paper road, right away, they shouldn't be on it anyway. So none of that affects you, right? Fifty feet, you're gonna, you're gonna maintain it perpetuity until the town takes it over? I'm good with that.
They're good, anyone else have any issues?
Yes, the extension should be twenty-four feet up.
It should be, yeah, it should be the same as the road. It should be the extension of the road. Whatever the road is paved, whatever Lowen is paved now.
You want it to pave the same way.
Yeah, one of the, yeah, it looks like the road, it's matching. But not for almost fifty feet, it should be the same. You're gonna use, we're not gonna make you do any drainage.
I have two drain basins at the end of the road, on each side.
For the, for the driveway.
No, no, for the, where actually the road is on the corner, there's a drain basin on each side of the entrance of the road. So that holds the catch basin.
All right, and that's all hunky-dory, Jimmy likes all that stuff?
Jim's away till, probably next week.
Yeah, he won't be plowing, because this will all be basic for the big driveway.
Well, but he's gonna maintain it, so.
He has it in there perpetuity until something else occurs, right?
Mark, I didn't get, you made a very, very important point for that street. Eleven Lowen Street is where we happen to be, and there's some other folks that are here. And one of the things that we may appreciate is that snow plowing for the town is very difficult there because of the corners and the positioning of the drainage in the street. And one of the things that we may appreciate is that snow plowing before the town is very difficult there because of the corners and the positioning of the drainage in the street. So I was interested in what you had to say and what you would have to say about snow plowing.
We wanna make it so Jimmy can push it to the end of the unfinished part of the road.
So he would basically move toward, basically in the direction of Baldwin Hill, you'd push it to the very end.
Yeah, that way.
And then, there'd be a.
So that has to be an area left there so that snow can be pushed back there.
Because it gets really, it's tough whenever ice starts forming, what you got?
How many, could I, how many people are from, Mark, how many people are from Lowen Street that are here? Oh, boy, okay. Does anybody else have any questions about this?
This area of people live there.
Yeah, let's.
We have a fifteen Lowen Street, like a pine tree or maple tree in front of the house.
Can we have your name from our, please?
My name already owner, like my mom's name or my name.
Yeah.
Whoever's speaking.
We need to know.
Okay, Kevin Chen, C-H-E-N. Right, so we have like a maple or pine tree in front of our house. It's, uh, okay, is there a problem?
No.
Oh, I saw you shaking your head, I thought you were giving me disapproval or something. Yeah, so I can't quite tell on this map if it's gonna be gone or not, or.
No, the road continues on, from where the corner is.
Right.
My lot line's right at the corner where the, where the street pole is. So the trees that are already there on your front corner, they're not being touched.
Oh, okay.
The only trees that are gonna be touched are the, there are some shrubs on my, uh.
So this is, this is after the corner. Yours is before the corner, this is after.
Right, oh, okay.
They're before the corner?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone out there, start a day, please?
John Nader? Joe, I have a question for you. Has a per test been done on that lot?
Yes.
There has, there have been a pass.
Yes, the septic's been designed and submitted.
Any work being done on the lot across the street from you, or is it strictly the one next to you?
No, this is just the one next to me.
There is a drain adjustment that you're not affecting the drain adjustment.
Not by that.
What about the one to the side? Isn't there a drain adjustment to the side?
I don't believe it's on my property on that map, from what they found. I think I have the easement to the back. And that's not being.
Well, that's on the other side. Any other questions, sir, Mr. Happy?
Say, how far down they're going towards Baldwin Hill?
They're going fifty feet that way.
Just fifty feet down?
Just fifty.
Yeah, 'cause they used to know that the absence, and of course, they're all dead now.
They won't mind.
I said they're not allowed, right?
Anyone else have any other questions?
Just one quick, Phil Peters, I live in Baldwin Hill also. I don't have a problem with building at all. I'm just curious. How, is it gonna, is the house gonna be with the, with the construction trailer, so to speak?
Yeah, we're taking all that out and putting the house in.
Okay, so it'll be roughly how off, how far off the lot line?
Right now, it's probably about fifty feet back. It's gonna sit kitty corner in the lot.
Yeah, I mean, I just curious, that's all. No objection.
Well, what are the other issues?
No.
No?
Hey. I did care a draft decision for you, I think that was in your.
Um, just a curious, how long will it take, I mean, that project, that new, new single house?
You mean to build it?
This one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why was the question, I'm sorry?
How long's it take you to build it?
Um, we're hoping about four months, four to five months, yes.
Starting from?
Um, once I get everything approved and the septic, I should be here in this week, we'll probably be starting in a week or two.
So set the foundation before?
We're trying to set the foundation, the, the septic system, and then backfill the entire flat before freeze.
Joe, you're gonna, you're gonna hire local labor, right?
Okay, so I'm looking to approve the, uh, the frontage for this lot, has a fifty-foot extension of Lowen. Except to the road being the same width as what Lowen is, and, uh, provision of the space being made available for the, for the plowing of snow and a covenant that the, uh, developer is responsible for the road until it's in it, if it ever gets accepted by the town, until it gets accepted by the town.
It's fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
I'll, I'll move that motion.
No, no, I.
You move that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
No, not doing, we're doing a check.
Joe, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Right, the next thing that Joe's gonna be looking for is a sign up on the building permit application. Do you want the roadway to be complete before occupancy permit, or do you wanna bond a piece of road, or how, do you want me to?
It's entirely up to him. If you can get as much done as a camel's bond, we'll meet some ground.
So bonded before occupancy?
Like we do on any other.
He's done a bonded.
They go for company with the amount.
Uh, we have an eight forty-five A and I have thirty-six to Haddaway Road.
Now, now, he's gotta build it, he'll have to build a permit.
Yeah, correct.
To Haddaway.
Who's that?
What's this one? What's up to Haddaway?
What do you have for us, Nick?
Sure, go ahead.
Do you wanna show us the setup plan?
Sure.
All right, all right, all right. Thank you. Hey, all right, so we have. Use your hammer. Time, take it out. Thank you. Okay, so we have an Anarch for, what is this, fourteen acres?
I believe it's about.
Fourteen?
Fourteen acres. Thirteen, fourteen acres.
We have a leading going up. Fourteen acres, so you have.
Dividing it into three lots, one is a conforming lot with full frontage, two would be reduced frontage lots. They're all a little over three acres in size. We did reserve a parcel in the back. It's a non-buildable parcel that we would hope to convey to the abutter. The abutter would like to have it as a buffer to him.
Who's that?
Uh, Kimball.
All right, thank you.
And that's it, conforms to zoning.
That's it? Oh, it's awesome.
And the plan you have in front of you is slightly different than the application plan. He added an easement.
Right, there is an easement shown on the.
This is the thing you researched, though.
Yeah, it's in, it's in an old deed from way back. It was basically for a farmer to get his tractor up into the field in the back at one point in time. But it's still there. It's never been extinguished. It's twenty feet wide along the property line, and then it's worded and running down the road to the highway.
So it's passage, and we pass, and including the driveway as well.
Right, it just allows the person to use the driveway and come up and get to their land, so.
Say, in use with others? Is that how it's termed?
It, it's specifically for a piece of land in the back.
Right.
It's not for use, um, it, it's, it's for use by the owner. The owner has the driveway of the property, but they have a right to use the driveway. That's what it specifically says. If you, if you read note five, that's the wording. It's on my plan.
So, so the person, the Colley Family Trust essentially has that right?
Correct.
To this property?
Correct.
This is sixty-one A right now, right?
I believe so, yeah, I think it's on for discussion later.
With the selecting, okay.
The selecting, uh, decide not to exercise it.
All right.
So is this, is this gonna be a shared drive?
Yeah, we will eventually have to come back for, ask for shared driveway, the access special permit.
Can you have an issue with that?
Um, I don't believe so.
You're not gonna do, use this one on its own driveway? You're just gonna have these two, or this one and this, these two?
Are you gonna connect into this single driveway with all the other lots? Is that your intent?
What works is there's, see this little bump out here?
Yeah.
There's actually a little road that comes right across here. It's a little woods road. We'd like to follow that, come in. This comes up, there's a bump out right here. We'd like to bring a driveway in over here, put a house.
How wide is the road?
Three, three houses on one.
The driveway.
Is this the final determination of this, or?
It could change. That's as much as I could give them and meet the zoning. So, but the owner's willing to, I think if, we don't meet that lot calculation, that ratio calculation. And so if we wanted to, if we wanted that waived, we'd have to go to the zoning board.
Well, actually, we've done it here. If it's gonna be donated for open space or something like, or for, uh, con space of some sort.
We want another sliver of land somewhere.
But it's, it's a.
No, no, not, no, not.
It's a, um, our opinion, it's a zoning regulation, and the only people who can waive that is the zoning board. And we don't wanna create a title flaw. And, you know, we have time.
Okay.
When we get these approval, we still have to do our soil testing and come back for the special permit, so.
Oh, I have no issue with this at all.
Anyone else have any?
We got three houses on one driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Right? How long is the driveway?
Long.
Who just asked that question? I'm sorry, I was trying to find something with number five in this thing here to read.
Note five on the plan, on the, on the right side.
They have to come back for a special permit for that anyway.
Right.
We're not issued, we're not dealing with that right now. We're just doing the A and I's. We're not doing anything but driveways. He hasn't asked for a special permit for a shared residential driveway. So.
Right.
And he may not, I don't know. So, right now, it's just whether the A and R meets.
Does it meet all that stuff?
It meets everything that we're asking for right now.
Tell us the truth. I had to ask the other guy.
I'm telling you the truth. Certified.
Don't like being lied to.
I'm entertaining a motion to approve the.
Let's see if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments.
A and R, nobody stays awake for A and Rs.
Yeah.
Going once, going twice?
No.
All right, so make a motion to approve it.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have, I do have the Mylar.
Mylar?
You wanna sign, are we signing paper A Mylar, just Mylars and you bring them back?
Well, I don't wanna have to come back on Monday, so what's?
If you wanna sign, you can sign in paper.
I'll sign the paper.
Martin, how many copies you want for yourself? You don't care.
Three would be perfect.
You don't wanna have to go. Okay, the science, right?
Those chocolates are good.
Hello, honey, it's me.
See that? One-stop shopping.
Chocolate.
All right, let's go. All right, um, oh, we can do that while we're going. All right, we have, um, Wilson Lane, shared residential driver off of Crane Road, bond to bond.
What number is this one? I'm sorry.
Just get up there, go.
Thirty-six.
Take your time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Why don't you have a seat? It's not plugged in.
Jeff, you're out of the thing for transformations for Spectacle Pond. So we can get lot to permit for the first house that we've completed on Wilson Lane. We've got, we have one more house under construction. We're on completion. We have our binder pavement down, we have fire system installed and inspected, the underground utilities are in. We still have top cut pavement to do, infiltration trenches to do in the spring once the last house is built. And then finally, yeah, that's good.
Do we have a bond to bond?
Yeah.
Um, thirty, no, that was in the email.
Twenty-six thousand?
Twenty-six four, is that right?
Twenty-six five.
Twenty-six five.
Has anyone looked at this? Has we sent it out to Green?
It says in the emails, no one's looked at it.
We have an asphalt that should be dependent without a government from our associate, and it should be coming in next week.
When are you looking for the, the release?
Uh, we're hoping to close on the lot, on, uh, lot, on seven Wilson Lane, lot one, uh, next week if possible.
Usually, we get it in advance and we get a look at it and, you know, I'm, I'm wrestling, try to get more out of you, and come to a settlement. So we're gonna kinda have to take your word for it.
We already gave a lot.
Does the board have any problem with this?
The buyers are local.
Twenty-six five for a bond? What? I don't know, you're on that one. Uh, I took off a good one. Does the board have any problem with the bond for twenty-six five?
So how big is the, is the?
It's just to finish off the shared residential driveway.
Yeah, how long is that for? Probably seven hundred feet.
It's a shared residential driveway?
Seven hundred feet for twenty-six grand?
All right, okay.
It's more than that, don't you, wouldn't you say?
Fine, go ahead.
So? Huh?
Board have any, do you wanna vote?
I second.
We have second, twenty-six five?
So moved.
All in favor? All right. See that?
Aye.
You're lucky.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Come to it.
Meeting is over, Buster. It's nothing like that.
No, no, you can't write me that. Notice it was a Mylar, that's all right. Um, you're gonna send Martin over a passbook for that, right?
Um, the check to the treasurer.
Uh, check, all right. Cash? Okay. All right, we have nothing.
No, don't say that. Can't leave yet.
Meeting, meeting minutes.
What do we have now? Really?
What are you here for?
Informal discussion Cricket Lane.
All right, go ahead.
You can just see them over there, thank you.
All right, go ahead. Your informal discussion of Cricket, Cricket Lane. Go ahead.
Where's Cricket Lane?
It's a private paper road.
Cricket Lane is down by Spectacle Pond. This is Samuel, the Colonel Samuel owned.
Thank you.
Property. They've owned it for about two or three generations. I didn't make enough math with my calculator broke, so I was having a hard time, but this gives you an orientation.
Yeah, thanks.
You're gonna share, okay. So Cricket Lane is in, uh, Spectacle Pond Road. And it's one of these, you know, lake area properties that developed sort of with everybody's housing, where they're pumping this to the water and all these dirt driveways to them. So, the, if you come in off Spectacle Pond Road down here, and you come up Cricket, Cricket is paved all the way toward that right spur, as you can see, it comes across to the right and all the way to the water. There's a second spur off Cricket that goes to the left, and that's paved all the way down past my client's house. My client's house is right about in the center of that lot. Right about.
Really, right here?
Here, no, their house is here. So this is the second spur.
Spectacle Pond.
Come in Cricket.
Yeah.
They, they come this way. It's paved to about here. Their house is here.
It's a dirt road, not that.
But it's paved to here, and it's paved all the way to here. It is a public, it's been accepted by the town as a public lane. My client's also own this house down here.
Which one?
This one, this cottage, uh, this cottage. So they have a house here and a cottage here.
What number Cricket Lane is that?
They have.
Try it on the top.
Two, ten or? Uh, two, sorry, two. They have, um, they have six plus acres of land. There are, as you can see, off this, their spur of Cricket Lane, um, there are at least one, two, three, four, maybe four or five houses being served off the other side of Cricket Lane, several houses being served. What they wanna do is, um, build the cottage up to a full year-round house. And I'm looking for input on how we can get there from here.
This one here?
Yeah, 'cause that's the waterfront cottage, and I want that to be the year-round house.
I don't think we have a problem with that. I thought the issue was whether or not they wanted to put more houses down.
No, they just want to build this cottage up to make it a full, or, or replace it with a permanent house.
So there's.
Sorry, that's not a cottage.
Maybe they'll subdivide.
Want to subdivide the wind?
Yeah, you said this was your plan.
No, I said there wasn't.
This one right here? Oh, you want to subdivide it?
Is this yours, John, in the line?
Well, yeah. The land we're talking about is the five acres here.
Right.
And we'd like to subdivide it.
Who owns the big field? Where's the big field?
Georgie Jones. That's across the way.
Who owns this cottage?
That's down the, yeah, we own that too. We own on the water.
And you own a house here?
And I owned it, a house in Lee, yeah, in the five acres.
The problem you have with this is you don't have a road.
Over here.
Well, yeah, here we are.
There is a road down there, cause it, it goes to two more houses down there already down.
It's an old-
You do have the road.
Private way, dirt road.
It's not dirt, no.
Well, it's-
And we would improve it.
It has to be subdivision standard, and it has to be-
So the, so the proposal is to take fifty feet off here.
Okay.
And then they would have, they would have the frontage for a house here, and then they would have the road to down here.
Cricket Lane is an approved road.
Cricket Lane's an approved.
Cricket is, but the spur isn't.
But the spur is not.
Right, a portion of it has.
So they have no frontage.
A portion of Cricket has been approved, but not all of Cricket.
Right.
Right, so you have to bring all of Cricket up to subdivision standard too.
I was told Cricket comes to subdivision standard to here.
I don't think it does. I think the, well, we've already looked at this before, cause it's, somebody, they, someone else owns the roadway in the middle of Cricket?
We, we own it.
They do.
We own it.
It's, you owns the road. But it's still, it's-
Well, where it's not, a town road.
No, it's a, it's been used.
I know, but it was done way before zoning and everything else. In order for you to have, develop this, you need frontage on an, on an approved roadway, so you have to bring this-
Right, they'd have to bring that up to standard.
Subdivision standard.
Break the work for subdivision, right?
Right. That's what you have to do. You have to get this part accepted, you have to get this part accepted.
If you want it to be over.
What happens to this part?
Probably we're gonna have to do it all, because you can't not finish this if you're doing this. You have to-
Why, why would they have to do anything down here?
Because you have to get Cricket accepted. You'd have to get all of Cricket accepted.
Cricket's accepted to here.
I don't even think it is to there.
I'd say she's gotta go, she's gotta go to the end of the property where they own. Is that where that little spur to the left is, is where your property starts?
Yeah, that's what we wanted.
And lever own is the end, is, is not you, right?
Right.
So she'd have to increase it out to the start of, of where that spur is.
Yep.
So she's got, what, fifty, sixty feet of that, and then whatever she decided to subdivide to the left.
Then the other problem is it can't be more than seven hundred and fifty feet long. That makes it more than seven hundred and fifty feet.
Well, what, what, what happens if she- We passed the, the wide part?
No, if Cricket's approved to here.
Right.
And they bring fifty more in.
That's still part of Cricket.
No, this is not. This is a right of way.
It's gonna be part of Cricket, so Cricket will be seven hundred and fifty feet long.
Could it be a driveway?
It is now. It is now.
Why can't it be a shared driveway?
It's not, it's not-
We're gonna do it and prove it up to the seven fifty feet.
It's not, it's not a town road now.
It, it's a town road to here.
Right, so when they add to it, they're adding to Cricket Lane. This is gonna have to be Cricket Lane.
This is-
They don't have to go all the way.
They don't have to go all the way. These people are already on a pre-existing dirt road.
Exactly, and they're not changing it. She, they want to add more houses to it. They have to-
They want one more house on their six acres.
They want it over here, and they want another house over here. They want-
No, the house here exists. The house here exists.
Just one.
So you have to show us what you can do.
You just want to break the five acres.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Let's start, go back for a few seconds here.
Why can't there be a driveway?
You have a house-
They don't have any frontage on it.
On the lake.
Yes, I do.
You have a house in the middle of the six acres.
They don't have any front-
They are both houses present.
You can't have frontage on a shared driveway. You have to have-
Have people living on it.
That's acceptable. We just did that.
But-
You have to have a roadway.
Recognize, you pay taxes, you got a separate, do you get a separate tax bill for the cottage?
The cottage, they can do anything they want with.
But it's all, if they already have a house here.
Yeah.
They already have a house at the cottage, then.
Right.
I don't think they have to do a bloody thing.
They don't have a subdivision. They don't have any frontage. Where's their frontage?
They already have a, a, a pre-existing structure now on the water.
They want to build another structure.
You can say that.
Not on the water, on the-
She wants to build a house over here.
Where your house is now, you want to build another house?
Or subdivide.
Okay, because you're saying one thing and they're saying another.
Yeah, they want to subdivide.
I agree with him. You need to upgrade that road off of Cricket. Wherever Cricket ends, if she turns around and say, all right, this is the end of Cricket, and she makes her own new, brand-new road, then she can, she starts at seven fifty all over again, don't she?
Where do you want to build a new house?
Well, first of all, you have to find out what this is. They have to find out what that roadway is.
My five acres, I gotta look at it myself.
People might already own it. People might, she can't-
My house is on Cricket.
The residents who bought it might own it. Well, they're gonna, you have to-
And we want to-
Yeah.
We'll have to see what happens. She's gonna have to improve the roadway, and then you have to decide how much you have to-
That doesn't seem like that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, sure. She said, love it.
She's gonna be way over here. She's gonna go way more than fifty feet.
No, 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 no.
That house is already there. You want to put a house here.
Exactly.
The current house is there. She was wrong.
And we want to split. Yeah, Mike, not all the way down by the lake.
You just said you wanted to put a house over here.
No, no, she misunderstood that. The second house is here, and we want to improve the road here, so that this would, so the house would be here. There's tons of-
I say spend the money, get it something that we can look at instead of fangers all over the place.
That's, that's what we like to do.
And then, and then let us know exactly how far you own.
We're gonna have town council look at who owns the road.
Who owns Cricket?
We own the road.
We own the road.
I said, tell you don't.
That's what we did.
All right. Uh, put a driveway in, along this back, back road right into there. Start the driveway right there.
She can't get frontage off a driveway, Richard.
She's, she had to, she's right, she's right there at the edge of the town road.
We don't know that. We don't know where the road really ends, cause see this twenty-foot right away?
Well, look, Sherry's telling us that they're, that the town road ends here.
They need a, they need a design plan, not this, to tell us where it is.
So if they, if they can get, if they can get, if they can get onto that road with the driveway, you're golden.
If it's a townway and you can get to the town part of the way, like Richard says, cut this piece off, and if you're gonna put a house here, cut it off that way. And that way, you don't have to do anything to all of this.
It's just a long driveway.
That'd be fine.
But that's what you gotta find out? You have to have some engine?
Find out where it ends.
Where it ends, who owns it.
Real drawing. Okay.
No, I know, you need it.
I'm gonna throw the monkey wrench in now. My client's gonna be mad, but I have to say it now, or else it's gonna come up after this spending money. This is just shy of one fifty plus thirty-five, so forth, what he said. I'm not getting frontage down.
Oh, you can't do it. Well, there you go, you can't do it.
Love the idea.
I heard both ways.
You can go to ZBA for it.
Go to ZBA, but I'm not sure, I'm not, they might do our chip, I'm not sure.
No. Put a house on-
I would say to you that it's possible they could get a ZBA variance only because the other houses have already got them.
No, not because, I have to stand up.
No, these houses never got variances. They were just built back-
There's a historic one that we found that does. Karen's got a variance.
Yeah, then you're not changing, changing the neighborhood at all.
I think we-
Consistent with-
I mean, is that, the other house, is that, is that for sale, or is that just for-
To do something.
I don't, I don't, I don't mind them having to pay fifty feet, just like you did for, um, Joe Cormier. That's, that's fair and reasonable. Um, if they can get there with that paving fifty more feet.
Yeah, you mean? Once again, as long as-
I think it might have to come down like that, but we'd see.
Whatever it takes to bring it up to current standards.
Look at it and do some research.
Get a real drawing, a real engineer, a real little, where something's gonna fit, spend the money, because you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars at some point. Spend fifteen or twenty now, maybe less, who knows?
Town council is obviously gonna have to research the history of the road, who owns it, and all that other stuff, so.
And, and it's-
Dantor search.
Well, yeah, but he's gonna look at it once it's done, but my point is.
Their attorney looks at it and asks, reviews it.
Find out exactly where this, how this is laid out, and when it was accepted by the town. They're gonna need to know that. I'm not sure it was. I always thought it was private.
Well, this, that one was, this road here, what happened was two houses were removed.
Yeah.
And on the D, it says to a road or proposed road. These two houses were built where this is a town road.
But it has to be accepted by the town.
It's on the list of accepted roads. I just, I haven't looked at the engineering on what credit it was accepted.
We're gonna run in the exact-
You can find a, a town vote.
Yeah, you gotta find a town vote. Same problem they have with Tehadawon. It's on the list of town.
They just nag off those, you know?
Not Tehadawon, I mean, uh, New State.
No town road anymore.
New State was never accepted.
None of these roads were accepted.
Nagog is the same way. Never accepted. Find out when it was accepted.
There you go.
All right.
See, I got, I got one too.
My hand was taken.
Okay, we'll work with you if it, if it makes sense.
That's what we want to hear, that's what we're gonna do.
You know, bring us good candy and we'll do whatever you want. We're like train sales. All right, thank you.
Yes, oh, yeah.
No problem.
I'm surprised Sandow won't try it up.
Go ahead, take it back. Inspection reports, the orchards.
She'll take the soft covered ones.
What else we got? Bills and, we have bills and stuff?
Get it back from Sandow.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
We got two letters in the mail. This is about Atkins Jazz Cafe not being able to go ahead because the-
We have nothing to do with the sprinklers. They already told us.
Right, but there are bills here, sorry.
What it was, Frank, is, I mean, it seems like a positive thing. It's moving ahead. I mean, we seemed happy with it. Why wonder is if it's worth approaching the fire department, has there some mitigation?
We, Sherry already went to Roland to try to see if he could, if he was within, but he won't.
No.
Yeah.
Why, they don't need fire car?
They want, the town wants them to put a sprinkler in, cause they're gonna have a, an entertainment.
Right, but there's also an appeals process. If she would apply and get turned down by Roland because of fire, she can take that to the state fire board or fire marshal, whatever the process is.
To the state BBRS, that's the-
She has not done that yet.
That, that's the only route to go.
If she, yeah. If she goes to-
That would be the route to go.
Yeah, she's, there's an E.
Rather than to ask the fire department to waive any safety regulations for a-
Are you signing? Is anything to sign?
There's a process, uh, in place.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, let her go through it.
It's the, it's the BBRS appeals board. That's the board that I'm on. And, um, and the forms are right online, and it's very easy, and they are very sympathetic to the sprinkling.
We really can't wait, you know, we, we approved their site plan. I mean, sprinklers are not our Bailey West side as well.
Is this because it's for kids, a separate or-
No, it's because it's gonna be-
Minutes.
It's gonna be, um-
Problem with the minutes?
No problem. Perfect as always.
Terry.
Uh, anything else?
Inspection reports for the orchards. I gave you the latest one. Um, the open question about the water in the sewer main crossing has been answered. Um, the water department did witness that installation. The notice, the intent to sell the thirty-six Tehadawon Road, selectmen will be looking at that at their next meeting, if you want to provide any input to them. The offer is a million dollars for the lot that has just been divided into three.
That we signed off on already?
Didn't they already decide they weren't going to pursue it?
No, they have, the selectmen have not voted on it. That was a suggested.
Should I have stepped off or done this part?
You saw?
What about this other thing, about the sign? I mean, that, that is within our purview, is it not?
Oh, this is a great shopping.
You have no application in front of you?
It is a good shot.
Um, Lance is within the thirty days of getting a denial from the building inspector. His relief is to go to the appeals board.
So he goes to the appeals board.
That, that's his relief that he-
His state appeals board.
No, zoning, local, ZBA.
I mean, it just strikes me, an argument being made. I think anything on the site would be concerned with as to impacting people. After all, 119 Russell Street, you talked about the lights of the cars leaving the facility. I mean, I, I can understand the argument.
Right.
Yeah, so, so have they gone advice that that's their path to take?
No, he's hesitant to spend the three hundred dollars to apply to the appeals board.
Really, really like, no, they got someone else to go.
But, yeah, this also is possible, maybe it will-
Well, you have to, you have to do a sort of, um, make peace with it.
All right, we have one more little bit of business.
Richard, I live in a world of generated tasks like this. I don't believe that.
I, um, would like to-
Well, if you're so smart, then-
Have the board consider me going back on the steering committee for the, um-
And you're a very unusual person.
Planning board, the, um, steering committee for the master plan that we're forming, um, myself, as opposed to Dawn being on it.
Yeah, that, that's perfectly fine, I would think.
I'll do it.
You'll do it?
I'll do it. My God. That's great.
Well, I-
I have no problem with that, if you want to do it.
The steering committee thing?
I'm, I make a, I make a motion that Peter, Peter Scott be our representative.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, and I, I do.
You have a second?
Mark, it was fine, but I do have some concerns.
All right.
I'd like-
What are your concerns, Dawn?
The way you treat people.
Really?
Yeah.
That's, that's an emotional thing.
They're all guilty.
No, no, it, it's based upon the fact.
I'd like Peter to do it.
We have a, we have a motion and a, and a second.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll, I'll be against, cause I think you would be much better.
Uh, Peter, you're?
I agree, but you know what? If Peter wants to take a spin, I'm happy that Peter is-
You just, wow.
I'd hope for a balanced approach.
That's like volunteering to go to like-
Well, that's, um, that's a, a great-
Did you drink the Kool-Aid or something?
Great choice.
I don't know. I just, uh, it'll be over in what, how many years? Three, four. Yeah, that's about right.
You'll be, um, you'll, you'll help-
I'll do the best I can to do what's right for the town and all areas.
Richard doesn't want me on it.
Martin, you always take turns. You can take turns.
I have a, no, no, you can have, that's happy.
Why don't you ask for an alternate? Yeah, we'll have an alternate.
Citizen planning, citizen planner training collaborative.
Well, the best part about it, regardless, are we all done, or?
We're all done.